We'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission's special meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in the Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org slash virtual meeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs, either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom screen. Uh, when the public hearing for that item is opened, a speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, you've shown the slide. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Commissioner Wetton.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Hill.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And an approval of the agenda?
And we approve the agenda as staff recommends.
And a second? I'll second it. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now a report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, um, this being a special meeting, um, Patrick, you can tell me, I don't think we are taking public comment, correct? Or do we need to do that? Can we save that till after six thirty?
And save it till after six thirty, Chair Hill, but we will, of course, take public comment on the items.
On the items, right, right, right. Just not general stuff. Okay. Um, in that case, and same deal with staff and commissioner comments, right? We'll do, we'll all do it after six thirty. So in that case, we are directly on to special item one A, which is at sixty-one, sixty-three Birdview Avenue. Um, this is coastal development permit number twenty-one dash zero four three and demolition permit number twenty-two dash zero one two. An application for an addition and remodel of an existing single family residence, including the removal of the existing basement and the demolition of its existing exterior walls. This is continued from July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, staff report, please.
Yes, good. Uh, hi. Good evening, Chair Hill. Numbers of the planning commission. As Chair Hill mentioned, the first item tonight is for a remodel addition to an existing single family residence located at seven one six three Birdview Avenue. Next slide, please. The project is located on the ocean side of Birdview Avenue and is landlocked between a rooftop parcel and the road. It is within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission, and the home was originally constructed in nineteen forty-eight compared to, uh, according to the L.A. County Assessor. Next slide, please. The project proposes the demolition of thirty-two percent of existing exterior walls of the existing, uh, single family residence, a demolition of a five hundred and fifty-four square foot basement, and the removal of a concrete driveway. The construction components of this application consists of the construction of a one thousand two hundred and fifty-four square foot upper and lower level additions, uh, not, not to exceed thirteen feet, ten inches in height. There's an interior and exterior remodel, uh, proposed, and a new lower level rooftop deck and trellis that will not exceed eighteen feet in total height. And also to replace the existing concrete driveway there proposing a new permeable dirt and gravel driveway. Next slide, please. Here's a site plan depicting the proposed development in relation to the property. The green box represents the addition and the red box represents the basement that is to be backfilled. The existing onsite wastewater treatment system has enough capacity to accommodate the improved improvements and is not proposed to be modified in this application. Next slide, please. Here's a plan of the upper level. Uh, part of the covered entryway will be enclosed and added to the residence. Next slide. The new lower level will be constructed and the basement will be backfilled. I shouldn't read there, uh, and that removes that square footage from the resident. Next slide, please. East elevation here shows the proposed heights of the additions. The upper level addition will not exceed thirteen feet. The lower level addition with the, uh, rooftop trellis will not exceed thirteen feet in height or eighteen feet in height. I'm sorry. Next slide, please. This section here better depicts how the trellis will not exceed eighteen feet in height and how the upper and lower level are separated, only connected by an interior staircase. Next slide, please. The project's components will conform to all typical development standards of the LCP and MMC as shown in the conformist table here. Um, the only, uh, the, the impermeable surfaces is, uh, over the maximum, but they are reducing three thousand square foot, uh, square feet with the reduction, with the removal of the concrete driveway. So bringing it closer to conformance with the code. Next slide, please. Story poles were erected in June of two thousand and twenty-two. Most of the proposed development is under the existing roof line. Next slide, please. There's just another angle here. Next slide, please. Uh, staff was looked, was tasked to look further into the existing front yard hedges because they are non-conforming and are proposed to remain with this application. Staff cannot identify exactly when the hedges were planted, but upon further review of previous approvals, an approval for the front yard entry gate was discovered depicting the gate to be visually permeable. The existing gate is not visually permeable, so staff added a condition to the resolution that the gate, um, shall be modified or replaced to meet current code requirements. Additionally, these photos were recently discovered showing vegetation in two thousand and two compared to vegetation in two thousand and four. The gate does move from the center of the property to the eastern edge, which is consistent with the gate approval of two thousand and four. The vegetation forming a hedge appears to be different in the two photos. Uh, staff is recommending an amendment to the condition forty-seven, which will be stated here in just a little bit. Next slide. This is the two thousand and four survey that came with the gate replacement. Um, this, this survey calls out vegetation along the front property line, although it does not could identify them as hedges. It just gives the width of their trunks. Next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends the following amendment to condition forty-seven of resolution twenty-two fifty to state the following. Prior to a green stamp approval, the existing front and side yard hedges and other trees must be removed and or modified to comply with current MMC and LCP requirements, unless demonstrated to planning staff satisfaction that the plants and trees were planted at the time of a two thousand and four survey on record that shows vegetation that existed at the, on the property at that time. Next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty-two fifty as amended. Uh, staff and the applicant team are available for any questions.
Sorry. Thank you, Tyler. Um, I was muted. Uh, John, you have your hand up.
Yes, I just want a little more explanation on the amendment. As it reads now, it seems that staff alone can decide what was there at the time, at their discretion. Even though we have a landscape plan at the time, two years, uh, two years after the LCP went into existence, and this is a special special street named under the code you mentioned in the staff report. So I wonder what does the, other than the evidence already presented, to change the requirement to remove the, uh, hedge, what would be required? New evidence?
Yeah, I think what we're asking is that they clearly demonstrate that the, uh, the hedges that exist today were there uh, prior to that survey that was shown. That's the only thing we have on record to verify any type of vegetation at that area.
So what would you call clearly identify or clearly demonstrate?
If they have any photographs or a stamped landscape plan from the city.
But we already have one, don't we?
We have a survey and a fencing plan. Uh, the fencing plan does not show any vegetation. Uh, the survey does pick out, uh, some trees and some shrubs, and actually it kind of looks like along the northern property line, uh, those, it looks like the vegetation was planted in such a manner that it could have created um, a hedge situation, but at this point, we're of the mindset that the hedge was not there, as you can see in those photographs. Um, where the old driveway was, for example, is very clear. Uh, that driveway was moved from the roughly the center of the property to the southern end of the property. So we, you know, that's definitely, in my opinion, there, there was no hedge there. And, and you, there, how those trees were trimmed, that's something we'd have to look at. Uh, but at this point, they would have to prove, uh, some evidence to us would make us change our mind. And of course, the commission tonight, uh, if the commission decides that the hedge, uh, the landscaping that was there did not form a hedge and the hedge is a new feature. Uh, as I mentioned, it's obvious in the area where the driveway was, something happened there for sure. Uh, but this is only a suggestion. The planning commission, of course, tonight, uh, will have the final say on it.
Okay, uh, John, you have to be follow the two thousand and two LIP requirements, which are um, no higher than road height, no higher than forty-two inches.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm confused too, because, um, when I read the staff report originally, I was called, uh, I read the section on page two of two saying that uh, the local implementation plan or the maximum height of forty-two inches, because the hedges will not be altered of the single family residence is not proposing demolition. Um, the owner should, would be allowed to preserve the non-conforming, uh, non-conforming landscape in pursuing to, uh, so on and so on. Uh, the applicant has agreed to cut the hedges to restore what is recorded in the neighbors' previously documented primary view determinations, which is for the hedge not to be taller than the roof line of the existing house. Um, so how is what you're doing now different than that?
So when the staff report was produced, we were under the belief that those hedges had always existed, the, and they were older than the city's LCP. Uh, once we received new information, I looked at it this afternoon, looked at aerial photos, and these photos would predate that uh, view, uh, primary view determination. And so that's why we've changed our position on it is because of this new information.
Uh, okay, so, um, this is a clean sheet project, right? No discretionary review, right? And is it not the city's position that, that we're supposed to consider the project that's before us, the applications is before us? And, um, and the reason I say that is that I have a little discomfort with the idea of, uh, mixing uh, code enforcement with, with the planning commission's role. And, and, and isn't that what we're doing here? Isn't that what you're asking us to do?
Yes, Commissioner Jennings, the only reason why we brought this up is that this has been a topic that it's come up, uh, what, twice or was it two meetings that this was? Uh, Tyler, we had two, this was scheduled twice before today?
Just once on the eighteenth.
Oh, just once, okay. And so this was a question that came up on the eighteenth, and yes, it is something that could be handled through code enforcement if, and I, I, I do know at least, I think the, the person who has the view concerns, I believe, is following up on this, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Tyler?
Well, this is just new, the photos are, are new evidence we received today. It was my understanding, and the owner's here today, that the agreement that the owner had with the neighbors is that she would cut them to the roof line because that would restore the primary view determination. But what we're asking her to do now would be to come into conformance with the LCP, which would be much smaller. So the roof line would be, you know, roughly six feet, you know, um, from the grade to the top of the hedge. Uh, but this would require her to come down to forty-two inches, if not less, if it was, you know, not above road grade.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to leave this question here and hear from the applicant, hear what they have to say with their presentation. And we've got this question on the table and, and we can tighten it up when we have more. John, do you?
Yes, we didn't do disclosures, and I need to do a disclosure on this item.
But, well, right, exactly. Let's do that. So, John, go ahead.
Well, I, um, I asked Tyler for the original approval of the gates since they were in the plan. And he sent me the original drawings and the approvals. And that is the one of what you saw in the presentation was the first drawing and the approval for the gate in two thousand and four, which was after the LCP requirement for public views on Birdview. So that's where that came from. Uh, so I can discuss other things later, but that's where that discovery came from.
Okay, uh, Jeff, disclosure?
Uh, only that I emailed, um, Tyler and I guess Adrian, and probably Richard too, on the issue of, uh, that I just mentioned, the, the, uh, the, whether they, I was asking whether the, whether the applicant had agreed to the, uh, reduction in height of the hedge, uh, as stated in the original staff report. And I was told that Tyler had been in touch with, um, the applicant, and they had agreed both to the, uh, reduction in height and to the, uh, to the gate issue. That's it.
Okay, Dennis? Mark?
None.
Um, I visited the site, saw the concerns about the hedge, um, and possibly trees further down the lot. I'll, I'll bring that up later if need be. Um, and I had some email with Tyler several weeks ago about the landscaping, the hedge, nothing that's outside the scope of anything we're talking about right now. So um, with that, let's open it up to the applicant and hear from Vitas Matari and, and or anybody that he's got on board right now.
I don't, I don't see Vitas in the meeting, but I believe he might be present with Bessie Zhang, who is the owner's representative.
Uh-huh. Okay, let's open up Bessie's microphone and see what they'd like to do with, uh, the fifteen minutes that they have available. Are you there, Bessie or Vitas or whoever is representing the applicant?
Uh, yes, I am here, but I, for some reason, I couldn't put on my video. Could you guys hear me?
We do hear you, and the way, the way our, our policy works here, nobody gets on the video except the city people, so.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Uh, thank you so much, committee, committee members, and thank you so much, uh, all planners and city employee for making this happen. Uh, I bought the property in two thousand and twenty. Um, we have done no change, not, no any changes to the house. Um, and, uh, so the gate was there, the bush was all there, uh, but I did engage, uh, because I don't live there. So I, I'm sorry, the bush has been a little bit overgrown, but I am, I told Tyler, uh, that I, I would definitely cut it down. And I have engaged conversation with the direct neighbor behind me. Uh, her name is Barbara Spears. Um, and, uh, uh, she's brought her view, uh, protection pictures and et cetera, et cetera. We already verified the height. She doesn't want to see the house as well. So she said she just needs the view. Um, and, uh, and then, um, I had a conversation with her today, uh, when Tyler called me saying there was news, uh, pictures were seeing, um, uh, there was some sort of vegetarian, but it was not necessarily the same vegetarian. So I feel the only way for me that, you know, for, I, I heard, I learned about an hour ago, so I called, uh, Barbara. And, uh, and she said, oh, she's, she bought her house in nineteen ninety-six, she said, she's roughly about nineteen ninety-six. So she said, uh, though they, the, uh, the bush was always there at that time. Um, so I said, this, this, those bush existed prior her purchase her house. Um, and, um, that's the conversation I had with her, you know, just about an hour ago. Uh, I thought I just want to share this with you. I am happy to, of course, work with all neighbors around to make sure they have their primary view and make sure it's well maintained, especially after I finish this remodel, I'm moving myself. I will be doing, I'm, you know, maintenance, landscaping maintenance, and I'm happy to, uh, adopt, uh, the rules that's applicable to me. Um, um, but, uh, seems so far the conversation I had with Barbara was this vegetarian was being very long time. We're talking about twenty years ago. Um, I, I was asking, um, Tyler, I said, well, picture that you saw twenty years ago, uh, up to growing up, after twenty years of growing, uh, the shape or, you know, the cutting way of trimming, um, you know, it could add many layers of, uh, complications and the look may make look substantially different. Um, but, you know, I'm happy to do anything that's make the neighborhood a better place.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Young. You have a little over twelve minutes remaining. If you want to say anything more now, or you can save that time for rebuttal if you hear anything else that you uh, want to comment on. Um, what, what's your preference right now?
Um, uh, thank you so much, um, for giving me this opportunity. Um, this is just a very, uh, simple, um, remodel. This, the lower floor was heavily molded. Uh, that's why when we bought the house, it was in the market for a long, long, long time. Nobody was buying it. It was pretty bad. It smelled really bad to have two younger kids. Uh, so that's why I requested, uh, to, um, uh, backfill those places. And it was built like so many years back, nineteen forties. So the, uh, you know, criteria of drainage at that time was not as, as good as today's standard. So we would like to do the lower part properly, making sure the house is all addressed. Um, you know, not so much change with upstairs at all, uh, just, uh, enclosed the four inch area for, um, you know, better look, uh, modern, more sleek look. Other than that, uh, we're not doing anything, anything else. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca, do we have anybody else who wants to comment?
If anyone else present in the meeting would like to comment on this item, please indicate by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none.
Okay, so we've got the, the, the vegetation issue on the table. Before we kind of wrap that up and get tighter on it, are, are there other questions for staff that, uh, about any other issues that we want to discuss on this? No others, other, I, I had maybe a couple of questions, uh, just, I'm not sure. The ocean view wouldn't be blocked from the street but for, uh, from the driveway area, looking through there, but for existing pines and palm trees further down the lot. How do those get handled? Do we just say those have always been there? Those are part of a, uh, previous landscape plan and they're grandfathered in? They do block a lot of, of view. Richard?
If, if they were, I forget the exact exemption in, um, the LIP. Uh, but there is a specific criteria that they have to meet, and it's more than essentially doubling the development that's out there if it were re, like a.
Right, right, right.
Right, and if you were to double what you had out there, then the view requirements of the LIP are triggered. Uh, you, you wouldn't be able to maintain, say, the lack of a view corridor. Uh, definitely, if this was a new house, if it became a replacement structure, uh, the palm trees, all the non-conforming aspects would have to be brought into conformance.
Okay, and then a question. And this is maybe for Patrick. We're, we're hearing that the impermeability is going to be better than what it was before, but still not up to the current required spec. And I just wondered, what, what authority do we have to say? Um, okay, well, you're doing better, but it's okay that you're not entirely complying. But do, do we have the scope to even say that?
And, and Chair Hill, I, I apologize. In terms of the, that, that original kind of hedge issue that we were discussing.
No, no, I'm sorry. Did I say view? I meant the, the, the impermeability of the, the, the ground, the.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, uh, so it, it was non-compliant. The new proposal is making it better, but not up to the required spec, and staff is saying, well, they're making it better, so that's fine. And I just wondered, on what authority can we just say, yeah, that's fine, we don't need to meet the spec?
Hmm, you know, I, I, I may have to have to, uh, tag in Richard here and, or Tyler. I mean, you guys want to go ahead and speak to that?
Uh, Tyler?
Yeah, that's, that's the same section as the existing non-conformities. So, uh, if you're not increasing a non-conformity, you're technically allowed to keep it. In this case, it still would be non-conforming, but they are making it better, if that makes sense. So.
So we're, we're under the same.
It's the same, it's one hundred and fifty percent, and so they can keep their non-conformities. They can increase their non-conformities, but they can keep or essentially reduce a non-conformity.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted clarity on. Um, and I guess my last question is, there's a rooftop deck here. Are the neighbors actively aware of it? Have you gotten no feedback or input from any neighbors about that?
I haven't heard anything on the development other than the hedges.
So we don't know what the neighbors know or don't know. Other than we know the neighbor up, up slope has a PVD and she's weighed in.
Well, there, there are story poles erected, um, so the two immediate neighbors would, would, should know, and they were also sent a, um, a notice, uh, with, uh, from twenty-one days from the first meeting, July eighteenth.
Okay, so the fact that they have not shown up here and made any comment, we should take as a positive, I guess, that we should assume they know. Dennis?
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna say, that, um, the house sits so far up towards the front of the street, there, there's not hurting anybody. There's, when I'm looking at on all the maps, there's a lot of room in that, that yard all the way to the bluff. So I can't imagine them bothering anybody with that deck so far up towards the street. Because those other houses are big and they go all the way to the, to the front of the lot or the.
Yeah, uh, John, your hand's been up for a while. Is that purpose, on purpose?
Yeah, it's on purpose. Um, just to comment on Dennis's, I believe this is, uh, two lots, not one. From the way the plot plan shows, there's a vacant lot in front of it. Um, on the question of the view and the special provision for Birdview and five other streets in Malibu, uh, we're not talking about private views. We're not talking about view preservation. We're talking about the prohibition of blocking public views from the street. And the reason I brought it up, or I, I asked about it as I drove uh, Birdview, and every single new house in the last ten years that I've been involved in has blocked the public view. They all have provisions against it. Uh, but it is an appealable uh, situation, since it's the LIP provision, it's not a municipal code provision. It may be both, but, um, I think it is very clear in the plans that show a chain link fence as the front, front fence, not a hedge. And no, no specific foliage other than trees and one area that says bush that we are required to restore what was there in two thousand and two, uh, as far as public views. These are not private views. And these are not every street in Malibu. There's Cliffside and Birdview are those, two of those specific streets. So that's why it's important to, uh, take care of it now rather than have it go to coastal. Thank you.
What is your specific requirement that you, that if you were to put a condition in here, what would it say?
Well, the condition they have, I trust the staff to determine, because this is a LIP provision. Uh, that's why I asked how they were going to go about it, and they're saying that they would require new evidence. Uh, I can trust that. I just, uh, and this is based on an LIP requirement based on, and if anybody knows Point Dune, you can barely see the mountains anymore, let alone the ocean. This specific street required no view blockage from the street above road height. And we just happen to have a two thousand and four post-LIP adoption drawing stamped by the city saying there was no hedge there. So I, I think it's clear cut.
What, what, so you, you're suggesting there should be no planting there or that it should be no higher than two feet or what, what?
I'll follow whatever that code section is, which says forty-two inches not to exceed road height.
In this case, forty-two inches, the entirety of the forty-two is above the road or, or most of it anyway.
Yeah, it would have to meet both conditions, so.
Yeah.
It'd have to be under road grade, and if areas were above than forty. And if areas were above, then forty two inches would be the maximum. That makes sense.
Jeff, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I want to go back to my other issue, which is trying to figure out what staff's policy is with regard to remodels and and other, not new houses, but other applications that are made for construction. Back years ago, it has, and it was always my understanding that because of Malibu's history of, say, a lot of bootlegging, that one of the things we wanted to do was encourage people to come in to get permits for what they were going to be doing. And and one of the reasons we took to do that is we said, we will only look at the application. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go through the entire property and hot out everything that might be a code violation and make you correct all those things in order to get a permit to build a storage shed. And so what's our position now, staff? Are we, are we? Are we looking at every violation on this property? Are we looking just at some violations on this property? And can we extrapolate from what your position is on this property to other properties? I'd just like to know what staff feels is going on here.
If somebody is doing new development, then they obviously have to bring the new. And I say new, I say if they're doing a whole new house, we see that as an opportunity to to clean up all the issues on the property, fencing, landscaping, all of that, obviously. In this case, our work is limited to what we focused on was the that the house. And any, if there were any violations associated to that structure, because that's the subject of what was applied for. The reason why we have brought up the issue of the hedges is that it started with a Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding was started with the neighbor with their primary view determination concerns. Since we're working on the property that came up. And we were looking to resolve that and the owner was willing to restore that view. And this additional extent that came up today was because we received correspondence or a comment from one of the commissioners and we want to close everything. So once again, it's, yes, this is beyond what we would focus on. But in this case, it was something that came up and we want to make sure it was addressed.
Okay, well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to extract a general principle here. And it came up, doesn't really strike me as a satisfactory general principle. This, the violation that you're speaking of, the height of these hedges or whether it's a hedge or not a hedge is something that would be subject to code enforcement in the ordinary circumstances, right?
That's correct.
Why are you bringing it up in the context of of an application for a remodel? Because, you know, it this, as I say, it's a clean sheet project. What finding would we not be able to make with respect to the with respect to the 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 structure itself? If if the client or the applicant doesn't agree to remove all these hedges. I mean, it it's. I'm just trying to find out what it is that staff is doing. And if the fact that it just came up is 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 the idea, then on every project, it's whatever comes to your attention or whatever some planning commissioner brings to your attention. Is that that what gets, that's what gets challenged?
If it's something that we can definitely use code enforcement to resolve this. But when something like this comes up by a member of the public or commissioner, I believe it best that we say it publicly. I don't want staff to be seen as sweeping things, say, under a rug. But I don't believe that in this particular case, if our answer would have been, we'll follow up with code enforcement. It's not a topic for tonight. I don't believe that would have satisfied the the commissioner that raised the comment.
Okay, so. Okay, fine, I guess. Dennis?
Well, on this, on this hedge thing, I thought I heard Ms. Ang say that the neighbor didn't want to look at the house either. So if they're gonna cut it to the roof line, that was fine with her. Doesn't have to be forty two inches. Can we ask her that? Did I hear that right? Did I hear that wrong?
Dennis, Dennis, I think the concern is it's not just about the PVD. It's about what John raised, that this being a public street, there's a separate view issue in play. Which I mean, it's it's still is a question mark in my mind, what they could or couldn't plant there, what what any condition could be that would satisfy that other than what we just heard, that it can't be more than forty two inches and it can't be above the street level. So if if that's the condition, then that's what it is. I don't know that there's any any negotiation about it.
We got two neighbors that are actually gonna try and work something out. Both agree, we're gonna blow them right out of the water.
Well, we have, we have, we have a general public and a law that we also need to respond to. John?
Yeah, we also discussed they're correcting the gate. Is that part of this proposal? Because they made a solid gate instead of an impermeable?
Staff has staff has put in a condition about that already.
I know, that's.
That is, that is verifiable. Like, we have approval from O four, the gate, you know, that was not done to what was permitted. So that we agreed needs to be taken care of. That's why the condition about the hedges is worded and such that we're giving the applicant a chance to show us that the hedges were there prior to this survey.
My only point is Jeff could make his argument on that also. And the the point is, in two thousand and four, they got permission for a gate permeable and a chain link fence. They violated every single part of the condition. So and and that's why when you start out on a project and you violate every single condition that you probably got. It should be corrected. And and as far as the two neighbors agreeing, the coastal commission, when it goes to them will not agree with that. And so you can trade off. You want to, you want to have the coastal commission decide? You want to have our coast, our compliance department decide? Or do you want to have the planning staff decide? The motion is the planning staff is going to evaluate it on future evidence and make a decision. Now, there's three choices, coastal or or staff or compliance department. But there isn't a choice of leaving a LIP violation in place. That's why I think it's wise for the staff to make that motion adjustment. Once they discovered that the application, the wording in the staff report was incorrect. And or as I should say, they have to determine it is incorrect. And move ahead. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve staff's motion or proposal as amended.
As amended by the staff, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I'll second that motion for discussion. Jeff?
Well, I've just, I don't want to beat this horse to death, but I have less trouble with with the gate issue. Although the principle is the same, the idea that we're somehow using or withholding a permit on an application, on a clean sheet application in order to force what should be a code enforcement issue. But in this case, I would think any sane person would say, yeah, all right. Admittedly, that gate was supposed to be permeable. It's not. And in order to avoid further hassle with the the code enforcement people, we're going to agree to make that change. I that seems like a sane position to take. But I don't see the the, I don't, I don't see John's point. Because if there was a permit to set a gate and a chain link fence. I don't know, is the chain length fence there or not? Or is that, is that the problem? Because there's no chain length fence there? People plant things along chain link fences. And whether this was permitted or not permitted is to me an open question. But the the primary issue is, I don't think that staff should be changing its position and changing its recommendation based upon a call from a single planning commissioner. That doesn't seem to be what staff should be doing, and I don't think it's something we should be approved.
Okay, John?
Well, we rarely read a staff report that thick. And if we see errors in it, you're actually saying that we should not tell staff about it? That makes no sense to me.
No, of course not, John. If if you see an error in something that's written in the staff report, that's fine. This is going outside the scope of the staff report, taking a clean sheet project and going after other issues on the property. I don't think that's appropriate for staff to be doing. And I don't, and the fact that you're complaining about it doesn't help anything in my mind.
Well, staff.
Jeff, hang on, Jeff, maybe maybe it helps to distinguish this in that there is evidence that came up that isn't in the staff report in the form of plans and documents previous that it's not just some subjective. Somebody has an opinion about something, but there's actually some material evidence that.
Look, if if there were an application that had been approved, that said, okay, your your hedge is going to only be X feet high. And, you know, that had been part of an approved project, maybe the last time this house was rebuilt. That would be, in my mind, that would be comparable to the gate issue. Because in the gate issue, you have, you know, this is what it's supposed to be. And I don't have as much of a quarrel with with having that dealt with by the planning commission. But in this case, as I understand it, all we've got in the the hedge issue is is people can arguing back and forth about when they were planted. I, you know, I, 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 but the substantive issue itself is is bothers me less than the procedural way we're going about it. It seems to me we're mixing our function with what should be code enforcement. And I think that, you know, the the problem in the long run is that it ends up being a kind of a random treatment of existing nonconformities on property. If you, you know, you you want to build a stable and you've got some things on there that maybe some previous owner did. You ought to be careful because, you know, some planning commissioner may say, hey, staff, you got to go get this nonconformity and get taking care of that or get this other one over here. I I think that's a kind of a random way for us to be doing business.
Point taken. I think I think in this context, and you're saying substantively, the outcome is maybe not as essential as the process question. I I think that that gets us to a vote on this, right?
Oh, I have a comment to make on that. I understand that the staff report says this hedge is okay. That was an error. Okay, it had to be pointed out. Everybody here read the staff report, it's in there. Now, when you say some other issue other than the gate, the drawing you saw was part of the gate application approved by the city. It wasn't some random thing that showed up. When they applied for the gate, they showed the fence and the landscape. And it was approved that way. It was not some random thing. It is no different than the gate. It is part of the gate application stamped and dated the exact same day.
What? You got the advantage over us, John, because you're the only one that's seen that document, so.
You saw part of it.
In in the interest of not going down every possible rabbit hole, I'd like to call the vote here and see where we stand. Rebecca?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Wedden?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And then we have some hope of getting to the other item here, which is item. What is it? One B on our new public hearing. This is at thirty one, two fifty Broad Beach Road, coastal development permit number twenty dash zero five three and demolition permit number twenty two dash zero one zero. An application to allow for the construction of a new gym with roof deck, a new swimming pool and spa with associated equipment, new hardscape and other site improvements to an existing single family residence continued from July eighteenth. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Chair Hill and members of the planning commission. The item you have before you tonight is for CDP number twenty zero fifty three for the property located at three one two five zero Broad Beach Road. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the vicinity map and aerial photograph. The subject property is located in the south side of Broad Beach Road in a residentially developed neighborhood. The property is currently developed with a two story, single family residence. Next slide, please. The project description includes the following. The demolition of existing hardscape, site stairs and the existing pool and spa and the construction of a new pool and spa, a new Baja shelf for the pool, a new Baja shelf for the spa. Pool equipment, the construction of a new one thousand one hundred and six square foot gym, the construction of a new rooftop deck, new fire pit, new water feature and new associated hardscape. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the site demolition plan, which, as I previously mentioned, includes some hardscape as well as the existing swimming pool. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the site plan, which shows the location of the new swimming pool and associated Baja shelf, new spa in Baja shelf, as well as the construction of the new gym. Next slide, please. Pictured here are some sections of the pool and spa. Next slide, please. Here's the floor plan of the gym, which includes a changing room and this totals one thousand one hundred and six square feet. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the roof plan of the associated gym. Next slide, please. Here's the gym elevation and the proposed gym does not exceed twenty four feet in height for a flat roof. Next slide, please. Here's a section showing through the gym and again showing that that gym does not exceed twenty four feet in height. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends the adoption of resolution number twenty forty eight, approving coastal development permit number twenty zero five three. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick, two threshold questions for Patrick. We don't have much time here before we might have to continue this. We have a request on the table from the MRCA to continue this to correct the factual record regarding the lateral easement. My question would be, is, would there be any reason to continue it if the applicant applicant were to stipulate here and now that they would accept that lateral easement? Is that is so, in other words, is this a valid issue to continue or could we dispose of that quickly?
No, I believe that's an issue that we could just, I almost say dispose of, but address and rectify tonight during the meeting.
Okay, and then secondly, I received an email document late this afternoon of a coastal document regarding the Broad Beach. The jihad stuff, and it was so complicated. I I don't know how to respond to it. I could barely even start reading it, given the time we have. And that seemed like a concern about potential continuance. I don't know whether that's even something we need to read at this point. What?
Yeah, I mean, that that's kind of more of a of a up to the discretion of the planning commission than a purely legal. And you said you received this document from from whom?
I, it was sent to John and John forwarded it to me.
Was it from city staff or was it from a member of the public or something to that to that effect?
Let's hear from John.
It was from the city staff, but I had just questioned, the part of disclosure, I questioned the staff what this easement was. Before I figured out it was the jihad. And I think we could just drop it as not apropos, because the answer to my question was it expires in two thousand and twenty five. So at the present time, it doesn't concern this project and the project was designed without the protective device considered.
Okay, so that's all a red hearing. So we're good to start considering things now. In that case, unless there are any immediate questions that any commissioners have, let's open up the public hearing and hear from the applicant team.
Would you like to take disclosure?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I always gloss over that. John, disclosure?
Yes, I did, as I said, I asked staff what that. Yes, I did. As I said, I, I asked staff what the, um, the, it was, and they gave me the answer.
Jeff?
None.
Dennis? Mark?
None.
And I have none other than what I just said, that I, uh, I, I saw briefly that document and didn't even read it. Okay. With that, let's go to the.
Before you go to, uh, the public, uh, is there anybody speaking other than the applicant? Cause I mean, we might as well just start, start considering continuance right now, if that's true.
We do have other speakers in addition to the applicant, um, that would carry over past time for the meeting.
So I, I'd like to make a motion before we go into public comment. It's a good place to break. I'd like to make a motion and we continue the item to whatever, whatever Dave Richard says.
And, uh, let's just ask Patrick, that, that, that would tend to streamline and make things less complicated if we just to address it all at once when we can, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh, do we have a second for John's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on that, Jeff?
Yeah, um, so the premise here is that we have to immediately stop at six thirty and go to the other meeting, but
Yeah.
Um, in meetings of the city council, uh, we often have one meeting closed session. We go on and the, and the open session would begin whenever it begins. Is there, do we have the, the, the flexibility to be able to hear and decide this item, even if it runs after six thirty, and then go to the other meeting as soon as we're concluded here?
Good question. Patrick?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't say that there, it's a specific rigid six thirty mark exactly that everything must stop. However, the more we kinda continue and get past that six thirty hour, I E seven, seven fifteen, seven thirty, then we potentially start getting in, into due process issues with the subsequent meeting. I E someone tries to log on, it hasn't started yet, they think it's canceled, there's confusion, and they kinda say, well, they're not hearing this item tonight, I'm, you know, I'm going to sleep, I'm going to dinner, I'm gonna do, go do something different. So I know that's not necessarily a concrete answer. I can't give you a specific time. If this was something, we would be five, ten, maybe even fifteen minutes past, I think we could, we could get it done. However, if, if we're gonna be speaking on this item to, you know, seven thirty, seven forty five, eight o'clock, I would, I would advise to continue.
Uh, my only thought was, we could, we, we hope in the special session, this was an item that had been continued before, and we're just trying to get it out of the way. Be good to get it out of the way if we could.
A second question, uh, there's no way we can continue it to the next meeting, is there?
Pat, I think you and I discussed this, the, the thought that they could just, the, the thought that the, the planning commission could just continue it to the six thirty meeting, but I believe, no, they have to move it to say like the first meeting in September, is that correct, Pat?
Correct, yeah, that, that, that was our, that was our conclusion.
Okay, well, we have four minutes till six thirty. I myself have probably half a dozen questions on this one, and I imagine at least a few others probably have a few questions, so I, I think we're beyond, probably beyond the fifteen minute window of grace that Patrick sort of outlined there.
So I'd like to make a motion to continue to September sixth.
Is it? We have a motion.
Okay.
Oh, well, he's adding, he's adding the date, and so, um, Commissioner Wetton, are you okay with the clarification of the specific date of September sixth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Jeff, your hand is still up, is that?
Oh, sorry, no, that's a mistake.
Okay. Um, just needing a little exercise there, I guess. Um, yeah, so, uh, call the roll, please, Rebecca?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
No.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, with that, uh, we have, I, I guess we need a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Some move.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries, you are adjourned.
Okay, it looks like we have two or three minutes until the next meeting starts. I don't know that we can do anything before then, because the public may be expecting us at six thirty.
Question, do we log off?
Yes.
Yes, you log, you log off and then log into that second Zoom meeting link that I sent you.
Right, there were two separate, separate links. Everybody has that second link in your email?
On the same email.
Same email, yeah.
Same email.
And I just recently resent that to you, John's, right before the beginning of this meeting.
Okay, so I think we should all be clear. Um, same bat time, same bat channel, no, different bat channel, uh, but in, back in two minutes, all right?